How are you?
Seven o'clock.
Back off my desk bed.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
All right, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of March 13th, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia absent. Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Please rise and join us to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Glad to be back after a brief illness. Didn't seem that brief at the time, but it was, I guess, brief. First, as public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled, we have a presentation by Fire Chief Sezlak regarding the ISO evaluation of the Rochester Fire Department. Chief, welcome.
Good morning or good afternoon and evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll get there sooner or later. About two weeks ago, I, we received our report for ISO. We included that in the manager's packet. I really wanted to kind of be here to make a presentation to you so that our residents within Rochester can take advantage. I'm proud to say that Rochester Fire Department is a Level III ISO-rated fire department, which puts us in the top 8% of fire departments in the United States.
All right.
So I'm very proud of that, and I want to thank, personally thank Council for making that possible. It's because of your support with the equipment and all of the things that you've done has allowed us to go ahead and get to that point. So thank you very much, Council, for doing that. What does that mean? Well, ISO sets the rates for your typical home insurance, and they take a look at our ratings. It goes from 1 to 10, 10 being the worst, basically you have to rebuild your house. And 1 is very unaffordable, in essence, but there's very few Level 1 departments. But being a Level 3 is, is very, I'm very proud of that with us being in that top 8% in the country, which means that all of our residents should be able to make sure they talk to their insurance agents, make sure they know that they're a Level 3, which should go ahead and save some money for each one of our residents from that standpoint. And we're about five points away from becoming a Level 2. Those are going to be very difficult points to go ahead and get, but we'll go after them. I've, my policy at the Fire Department has never been to chase points, but to provide the very best service to our citizens of Rochester, and the points will take care of themselves, and I think that that policy has worked pretty good. When I first came to the department as the chief in 2008, we were a Level 5, and we've now progressed to the point that we're a Level 3. And again, it is a lot to do with what Council has done to support that process. Also want to call out the Police Department and the DPW because they get evaluated during our process too. And so thanks to Alec and the DPW and the water guys and Chief Steve and the dispatchers, all of the things that fit together into that process. I'm here to answer any questions if you have anything in regards to our ISO standings.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. This is our second year?
Yes.
In a row. Thank you. Is there a document we can send to our insurance company, a certification, if you will?
I'm not aware of one. I'll, I'll take a look and see what I can go ahead and find from that standpoint. Typically, when you renew your insurance, if you take a look, there's an area there that says that your fire department is rated at whatever classification, and you just want to take a look at that document to make sure that it's properly as a Level 3.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, well, congratulations, and I just wonder if there's something for landlords as well, or how to get the word out, maybe it will be in the newsletter, let people know because this is something really good.
I'll get with the city manager and we'll get that into the, the next newsletter, and we'll also get it posted on our website.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Great job.
Think further. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks again, Council, for all of your support.
Are there any public comments that are not on the agenda?
Anthony and Marcy are on.
Anthony and Marcy, that's it?
Hello?
Ms. Turner, go ahead.
Yes, I'm wondering if there's any truth to the old school about keeping part of it, but tearing down the rest.
No, we, we have not heard one thing on the new school, so there is no truth to that.
New school?
That's, that's news.
There's no truth, or is that there's possibility?
Well, that's what you read on Facebook, Ms. Turner.
Yeah, there's no, there's no truth. Now, what, what the school district's doing, we don't know, but that's the first I've heard of it.
But there's been no applications to tear it down?
Correct.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, thanks.
And Mayor, there has been no other public comment on Zoom tonight.
Yeah, and Ms. Turner, we would not get a thing to, to tear that down, or would we?
We would.
Yeah, we would. Okay.
Yeah, we'd get a demo for the property. Demo permit. Correct.
Correct. Yeah, so we, we don't necessarily have a say, but we would know.
Right.
We don't know anything right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, there's an amazing lack of movement on that property.
I could say one comment. I had someone come in and ask if they, we could make arrangements for them to get into the building to look at it. So I called the contact at the school, and they denied that, said, "We're not letting anybody in. We're on hold. No, nothing's under review. We will accept nothing at this time until we let you know." That was last week, so, so he literally just wanted to go in and look, and they said, "Not interested."
Is that a public building?
Well, it's closed right now. Nobody's in there. They have some, one IT person, I think, in there.
Okay.
All right, next we have approval of the minutes. It's consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of February 27th, 2022. Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, under the approval of the consent agenda, we are going to pull the number A because they're going to give a brief presentation. First, B is consideration of special event application from the OPC to hold the Walk for Meals 5K on the Clinton River Trail on Saturday, June 3rd. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Michigan Senior Olympics to hold their Senior Olympics opening ceremony in Municipal Park on Friday, August 11th. Next is a consideration of special event application from MAD Michigan to hold the Walk Like MAD event in the Municipal Park on Saturday, August 26th. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the American Cancer Society to hold the Marking Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on Saturday, October 14th. Next is a review of the current 2023 event calendar. And lastly, is a review and approval of the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Subscript Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Rochester, which we've had for a number of years.
Motion to approve all but A?
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have A is a consideration of a special event application from the St. Baldur's Foundation to hold the St. Baldur's Day event to support childhood cancer research on Sunday, May 20th, from noon to 5:00 PM. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm Michael Fiskus. I'm a volunteer for the St. Baldur's Foundation. How many folks here are familiar with the event we've been doing in Romeo for the last 14 years? Great, so let me, I'll walk through. I was told, I think, about an hour ago to get ready for a presentation, and then I was told not to do a presentation, and so we'll, we'll walk through this pretty quickly. So the St. Baldur's Foundation, kind of in a nutshell, is designed to raise money and awareness for childhood-specific cancer research. A lot of folks donate to cancer research all the time, but less than 5% of that funding goes to childhood-specific cancer research. So the foundation, their goal is to focus on treatments for kids and for cures for kids. So it all starts with somebody like me talking folks like Glenn and Chris into doing crazy things, and part of that is getting people to shave their head in solidarity who, with kids who lose their hair during cancer treatment. So we've been doing these events in Romeo. The first one we, we did was, was kind of small, but we still brought in, I think, 150 shaves and raised almost $74,000, but over the last 14 years, we're just under 3 million. So we'll kind of walk through that a little bit, but I wanted to kick off with like a little short video that we produced with content from the event we do over in the Village of Romeo, and we'll do that next. Might be a little loud. So there's like 12 of any of these events done globally. The one we do in Michigan has been like in the top 10, like seven times. I mean, it's, it's gotten pretty large, and we'll talk about some of the, the numbers really briefly. But an interesting note is when we started to plan this 15 years ago, we originally wanted to have it in Rochester. So it fell back to Romeo because Glenn raised his hand first, and so we started there. So it's sort of fun to sort of come back here because we think we could do something really big here. Now, like, we were doing statewide for a while there. I'll show you what some of that looks like, but just kind of understand what we think about childhood cancer. There's a child diagnosed like every two minutes. One in five won't survive. And again, the funding is much lower than we want, and we really want to make that, that difference there. So since we've, we've started this event, you know, St. Baldur's Foundation has raised over $325 million for, for research globally. We've, we've done over 1,700 grants, probably 70 of them in the state of Michigan. We're trying to find the best research everywhere. And again, this is for research for the treatments and better treatments and cures. And when we talk about what we do in Michigan, the event that we do there, we've got a great group of volunteers that come together each year, usually about 70 to 75 people step up to help out with this. Now, we'll have a core committee, which we've already started, but one of the things that we'll ask if somebody from this body would want to join is be, be a liaison. You could help be part of the planning. We could almost guarantee you don't get shaved unless you want to, but we like to make sure we have really kind of strong community involvement. But you can get kind of a sense of just how big it is, because we'll have up to 5,000 people come up to, or come out for that event, and that's after doing it for, for more than 10 years. We've got lots of different groups that participate with us on this, but it's really kind of strong in the community. The fire departments will join in for multiple communities, the schools will come in and compete, but it's just like such a great vibe that day. And we'll have a certain number of barber chairs that'll turn over every 15 to 20 minutes. So we can schedule the crowds and the flow through town as well, so it's not going to be too crazy at, at one given time. So you just see some of the pictures. Now, this is one of the craziest things we did. Now, if you look at it really closely, that's the biggest thing I've ever designed, and that's a corn maze that we did over at West, our Westview Orchard. So kind of like big deal. We try to come up with something big and clever to get like news coverage, which we'll do for here as well. We've done partnerships with both the Tigers and the Red Wings in the past, but if we look at how this event has grown, there was a period between like 2012 to 17 where we were doing it statewide, because my job allowed me to promote through Michigan in February. But again, we think that Rochester could easily land like where we did in the, the second or third, or no, the third or fourth year, where we'd be pushing probably close to 150,000 to 200,000 for that first event we would do here. This is also kind of like a spike on the number of shaves we've had. And so we look at, this is each year the number of shaves. Again, in 2013 was a weird blip because we kind of covered the state. We had people coming from everywhere, and I think we had more than 100 folks between Rochester and Rochester Hills that have shaved with this as well. This is just kind of a quick look at, you know, where they're coming from across the state. This drills in a little bit closer into Metro Detroit and all the different communities we have folks register from. And we think about who shaves. Again, there's a lot of kids that shave, a lot of student participation, and usually good representation too from, from girls, women, and grandmas that shave with us as well. So what we kind of look at for the first year in Rochester is probably 150 to 200 shaves. We'd expect at least 3,000 attendees, and we'd probably set a goal of at least 700,000 to 150,000. That makes it safe that I pass that 3 million mark, which I'm so close to. And this is kind of like a rough, like, street plan that we've done. We recognize if we can close down 4th Street, that would be awesome. We would absolutely put nothing that would block the alley, and we'd have more open to sponsors and stuff closer to Main Street, and we'd contain all the shaving in the tent, and then we would route like entertainment and food across the two venues that those fine gentlemen own. Any questions on that? I think you've all seen that. And so we've got a, a event page set to go pending your guys' approval. Next step would be, we would do kind of a big launch announcement. We would also reach out to all the local businesses to see who wants to participate. We always do that in Romeo, go door to door, and see who wants to be involved, and they could know that all these folks are going to come in that day and give an opportunity that they can participate without having to put up any money, but they can be involved that day and help raise funds or at least take advantage of that traffic. Then we've got probably close to 5,000 past participants that we would market it to, and then social media, and then reach out to the local TV networks. We've had really good coverage across 2, 4, and 7 in the past. So I think this will be kind of a, a good, you guys already do a lot of great stuff here. There's a lot of ideas we lifted to do for, for the St. Baldur's event there in Romeo. So I'm really excited about trying to do something here, and I appreciate you letting me talk because I felt I had to work to earn it. So is there any questions on the event?
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Michael, and it looks like a great event. On your one slide, it showed, did the pandemic mean that you didn't do the event since 2019?
They went virtual, so that, that's the other thing too, is, you know, the foundation was probably raising close to $28 million globally prior to that, and it's dropped down to 18. So they're, they're trying to reinvent themselves going into this year. So where we do the event here locally, I also volunteer with the organization nationally. So this would be the first really big event post-pandemic.
Okay, so this would be the first live event since 2019?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Michael. I know there are two barber shops on Fourth. Have you approached both of them?
Well, I wanted to approach both of them because I think one of them actually has beer in there, right?
Correct.
That, that really kind of makes, makes it interesting to me. So the, the first thing is your guys' approval of it. We'd absolutely want the, the local barber shops involved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
No, great event. How do you, how do you raise the money, though? Is it per shave?
So one of the other great things is we handle very little money. There's sponsors that will cover some of this stuff, but as I sign up to shave, I set a fundraising goal, I share off a webpage, and my friends all donate on there, and every penny of every donation goes directly to the foundation. And the cool thing is, is we're landing that day, usually 80% of that money's already in their hands. So we, we're not going to take any of the money from the donations and, and put that towards hosting the event. We usually will leverage sponsors like our friends back here, but it'll all go right through there from all of those shaves, talking all of their friends and donating to see them bald.
I'll make a motion to approve after.
Councilmember Gould?
Thank you. Great event. We do stuff like this at the university with St. Baldur's every year. I was wondering, why is it moving from Romeo? Just a size thing?
Well, part of Romeo's been, you know, we've done it there 12 years. The average lifespan on these events are like two to three years, so we went like really long. We've had pushback from some of the community on shutting down Main Street, so it's, it's being able to sort of scale. The other thing also having it normally would have been this past Saturday, which would have been quite cold. So shifting to the summer and being someplace more central, because we know we had a lot of our shaves come from the west half when we look at where we're at, I think this would be a lot more central. We didn't have kind of like the same commitment from, part of what we have to do is first find local businesses that want to raise their hand and say, "We want to help make this, this happen," and that's what these two guys did. So they raised their hand and reached out, and I've had a goal to do it here for years, so it's like, I'm going to jump right in on it.
Just for people listening at home, can you identify who you're referring to?
That the Glenn and Chris. So Glenn's opening up the Roxy. His restaurant in Romeo Youngers has been like a, a big sponsor of the event. He's let me take over his business every year, which is awesome, and do whatever we need to do there, and hopefully we're going to get the same sort of cooperation from our friend Chris there. Right? Can we get you to commit to that?
All right, so we have a, thank you. So we have a motion for Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, welcome to Rochester.
Good presentation. Thank you.
It's going to be great.
And it was in 45 minutes.
Just like to scare folks sometimes.
You, you scared me a little. I saw 45 slides. All right, next.
Thank you.
Thank you. No old business or table items or public hearings. We have legislative deliberation. At first, it's a request to schedule a public hearing on April 10th, 2023 for zoning ordinance amendment, Article 2, Central Business District, Section 1100, 1102, and 1103, to restrict some uses to upper, non-street-level stories, and that's where we want to restrict the first floor of some of the downtown to have businesses that do have traffic. Mr. City Manager, do you want to add to that?
No, that is correct, Mayor. Thank you for that. We have, there's a lot of support from the DDA Board. They made a formal motion to support this. It came from a discussion from Roger Knapp, which is our former mayor, and noticing a lot of traditional downtowns, what you're trying to do is not have dark windows at night or on the weekends, and our general office group, and a lot of it's the realtors and things like that, that we love having them in town because they bring in business, but when they're closed, there's gaps in our streets. We've heard that before, especially during big bright lights. You might go on the prime block from University to Fourth on the west side of Main. You might go 400 feet before you hit a business that has lights on because there's offices there. So it affects five existing businesses, and they're all happen to be realtors. Four are realtors, and one is Daniel Bryan. That's the office user at the far end of town on the east side. So again, we love our offices, but we want them on the second floor. And I can give a good example. When Kevin Stewart, realtor, came in, he had a chance to go first floor, second floor. He's on the PSD. He understood the value of retail on the first floor, so he took the upper floor. So that's exactly what we're looking for. So people that have existing businesses in town today, the four, are grandfathered in. We let them know that. If, if they lose their tenant, they have one year to put an office tenant in there, and it would be okay. So we're not restricting anybody per se, and we feel it's a good idea. Many traditional downtowns have this in their zoning ordinances, and we also only allow upper-story apartments forever, since the 50s. You never could live on the first floor on Main Street because of that exact reason. So this is just the next generation of it. So we would ask for setting up a public hearing.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, just to clarify, so the grandfathering is that if it's, if it's a office, then they move out. They can keep continuing to have offices in there if they get them filled within a year.
That's correct.
And then after that, like with Daniel Bryan, then after that, there has to be retail or service.
With Mayor alluded to, it's, it's things that bring in people. It's not just pure office, like a bank, it's service. Some of our shops that, our service industries also, it's just general.
Professional services, I think, is what you mean. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Peterson?
Yes, I would like to correct for the record. We, real estate is a professional service, okay? So, but I do want to bring up one very big thing that a lot of older communities like ours have, and that is you are, would be discriminating against a class of people because they would not have a way to go upstairs, because not all our buildings are equipped with elevators, et cetera.
So, Mr. Mayor, good question. Anybody that's retrofitting an office building has to have an elevator or a lift now, so we would take away that, that potential discrimination. So I agree, but anybody that's retrofitting office now, they have to put a lift or make arrangements to be able to get upstairs, so we could cover that. That's in the building code.
So.
So nobody would be, so any, any office, unless they got a waiver from the state, would have to have access to that second floor so that they could get up there.
Okay, so, but how, I guess it needs to be re, I think it needs to be rephrased to where it's not just about, the emphasis is only on mostly real estate.
We, we never say that word in there, I don't think.
Okay.
It's, it's, I use that as an example because of the four that are today on the first floor. The only general office is four realtors and Daniel Bryan, so, but not, it's not called out in the ordinance. It's general office, what we, what we're, non-service industries.
I think you're using real estate as an example.
I am, because, because they're the ones that are there now.
Because we are, yeah, we are a service industry, though.
Absolutely, and we love them because, again, they being people in the town. Credit Union would be a general office, but they're north of University, so.
One more, if I may, thank you, Mayor. Also, just so you do know, statistically, through the National Association of Realtors, one real estate transaction can generate up to $60,000, $76,000 per, it, per transaction in a community for all the goods and services that are provided within a sale of a property.
Again, I appreciate that statistic. We're not trying to eliminate, we're just trying to push it off the main floor, that's all.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Trent. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gould. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, and this is just for a public hearing?
It's at the public hearing, right?
Yes. Okay. Next report on regular business is the city council nomination to the board of review. Kyle Houston, who is currently a alternative board member, there's now an opening and would like to be appointed, but it is a city council appointment.
Motion to approve.
Support.
So motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Now, we usually put it in a nomination and then wait a meeting. Because he's an alternate now, do we want to put him on now?
The board of review's coming up, so.
They, they started meeting today. He's already in that capacity as an alternate, but you approving him tonight, just switch him to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Albrecht, you good with that?
I support, yep.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on to receiver the check register. Are there any comments for the city manager? All good, okay. Next receiver report from the various boards of commission is a report from the Finance and Budget Committee, Councilmember Trent and Albrecht.
Yes, we met on, get my notes. March third. And first of all, we now have a introduction to two employees each time, so we met, call it employee connection. So we met with Carl Mayer, the Parks Manager, working park foreman. And he gave us, we got to meet him, and he told us about the things that he does. And he does quite a bit. He manages the tree inventory in Rochester City Parks and green spaces. And he's liaison between the city and the residents. So that's, that means he gets, he gets along well with people. So he also is a liaison with Clinton River Watershed Council, Paint Creek Trailways, and Dinosaur Hill. And he's going to help put birdhouses, bluebird houses, and help build them and put them in Howlett and he, and municipal parks. So he volunteered to do that and make them. He loves birds. Corey Benedict is the water department foreman, and that's something that we really need. And when it's not working, it ruins our day, week, or longer. So if the water breaks or something at a residence house, he's there. He hears about it, and he takes care of it. He works with the EPA and the state government and Eagle. He follows those rules for a healthy aquifer, thank goodness, and the water plant is in good shape. All right, so for the budget notes. OPC Transportation Millage, the city is going to receive an eight-thousand-dollar reduction because of the transportation millage that was passed in the fall. On the parking fund, there's ninety thousand dollars more that they're bringing in, but that helps them stay positive and, oh, it's not feelings positive, but positive financially for the current and projected maintenance. So they take care of it that way. And then the tot lot, there's a grant that is been approved, and they're, they're currently working with Gary Peters team to expedite that because we want to start building in the spring. We have a parks master plan that needs revising for two thousand twenty-three, and we're gonna work on that. And the grants are continuing to be pursued. So bottom line is, the overall budget is in the black and is in good shape for the next three fiscal years based upon the current numbers and projections. Any questions?
Thank you. Next is a report of the PSD, Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we met on March first. And whatever, several items. One, the group is still trying to figure out an adequate placement for the Junk in the Trunk event that was kind of getting junkier and replacing the Thursday Night Market. So they're considering, and I think it'll come before council soon, something called the two thousand twenty-three Makers Market, which should be hosted on June twenty-fourth from ten to four. This would be more of an artisan market with tents. I believe they're, they're targeting about forty-five artisan and craft tents and vintage businesses. Hundred fifty-dollar entry to rent the space, and then you kind of bring your own tent tables and everything. So that will be coming before us before too long. They did provide another update on the Snowman stroll. As you recall, last time, the price was going up. They called the place where they got the sheep a long time ago. It's in downtown Detroit, but the price has skyrocketed on those sheep. So they're gonna stick with the folks in Chicago that are making the snowmen. Everybody likes the snowmen anyways. Probably be a slight, excuse me, a price increase going forward to make up for the, the cost difference. And then they did provide an update on Foodie February. Out of fifty-four restaurants, they had receipts from forty-nine of them. Most of them were from Bologna's. There was a total of six hundred and twenty-six receipts turned in in the month of February for a total of almost thirty, just shy of thirty thousand dollars in food. And they drew winners for a five-hundred-dollar, two-hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-dollar gift certificate. So that was very successful, again. There was no financial report. They were about to have the meeting. It's still too early in the year. At this point, there were some other updates on the DecArt event. April seventh is the registration deadline unless they sell out prior to that for, for DecArt. And the executive report, the executive director's report really highlighted that this is for the eighteenth year in a row nationally credited United States Main Streets. That's pretty incredible what the group is doing there. So that is, I think that's it.
You're good? Thank you. We're going to move the receipt of the report from the OPC to the next meeting when the mayor pro tem is back. Actually, we have a receipt of a report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage. Did you want to do that?
Well, unfortunately, I was out of town on business.
I'll take that.
Yeah, so both Councilmembers Sage was out of town, and I was sick, so neither one of us were there.
I got you covered. We was, it was a scramble to get our quorum, but we had five. And we appreciate the fact that everybody could make that, knowing that you both had excused absences. So it was a robust meeting. Matt Stone chaired the meeting, did a great job because it was, it was a bit all over the place with these items, and Matt did a great job navigating us through. So thank you to him and your stead, because you two would be the ones that would, would run the meeting if Chairman McGee wasn't there. So we started off with discussion on our item tonight for the CBD. We had that discussion. They made it forward. They recommended to forward this on the city council, which we did tonight with the positive recommendation. We went through the draft lighting ordinance that the city council had passed back to the planning commission to kind of grind through that. We heard from Mrs. Kane, who is the one kind of pushing this. And we got all the information she needed to them, so they had total information. And the goal was to get it to the city council. So they passed a motion to move that on for public hearing. I think we're set to ask to schedule the public hearing. So the second meeting in March here will then set the public hearing for the last meeting in April, so we have time to advertise it, right? So, so we have that covered. Now, I'll be coming with you. You will get everything that the planning commission got from Ms. Kane, from others, all of it. So pictures, reports, minutes from every meeting. It's been going on for quite a long time. We want you to have everything you can. Attorney Krotz is gonna write a memo that summarizes a lot of the comments that were made from the commissioners, that you all have everything you need to have a discussion. We can start that discussion next meeting and then get ready to set the public hearing for more input from the public at the end of April. We had Greens Art Supply all come in, and Artera Realty is taking, is going to move from their leased space next door and take both floors and convert that to general office for their use. It's really a workplace, and they were gonna redo the facade on Greens in the front. And then in the back, we do that, take out the asphalt in the back, put outdoor, not dining area, but outdoor gathering area for their tenants inside. It's got a screen wall around it and make it nicer space. So that was, we almost got there, but we had a couple of glitches. So they got set to have their wrap-up meeting this Thursday at the special meeting of planning commission. So we should have them through, and they're busy working inside. We were able to give them permits for the inside, but we couldn't touch the outside of the building until planning commission weighed in on that. They're also seeking pay in lieu of for four parking spaces because of the change in use. So, and they're willing to do that. Then we went to the Downtown Inn. We've been trying hard with Peter Collage, who bought that some time ago, and he's renovated, but he wanted to take that next step, which is just clean up some more and add a lobby area so the people that stay at the Downtown Inn could get a drink or have breakfast there, but not the outside public. So we needed to go through the planning commission with that, and we got that okay with some corrections that we just have to change a few things on the site plan, and that will be approved and move on to the April meeting for final, final consideration. Then we talk Brown Iron Brewery, which is in Washington Township. Patty Eisenbron's been trying to buy, her husband Tim has been trying to buy a building in Rochester to bring that operation here. They are literally an award-winning small brewery for years, and they have, have a purchase agreement to buy the Michigan Veterinarians Clinic on Second Street. So they're having some title work problems. It's not their fault. A meeting with the attorneys Friday to try to get that all worked out with the county about a legal description. And she plans on bringing the brew operation here. It's zoned industrial, so that's perfect. And within the industrial zoning classification, you can do other uses that are incidental to the primary use. So she would have a ninety-nine-seat Brown Iron Brewery with outdoor dining and really be the bookend of what we're trying to do in the whole Town Square area. So we're excited for that. They set a public hearing for April on that. And we had, there's my notes here. Brown Iron, what else? There's a couple more, I think.
Dumpster enclosure.
Oh, it's right here, sorry. Yeah, we've had a struggle with, when video reviews site plans, she always has to address one whenever there's a dumpster enclosure. Most people, the ordinance today says you have to put a masonry block enclosure. Over the years, those actually have been problems. They deteriorate, they get hit, they're terrible. So we, but the ordinance says you shall have a masonry block. Same materials as the building. There you go. So, thank you. So what we decided to do is, just Attorney Krotz wrote in a covenant into the new, to the existing ordinance, sorry, and says the planning commission should have the right to alter and match other materials that are appropriate. Still have the gates, make sure they still have the posts, but we can change the outside, whether it's chain link, whether it's wood, whether it's vinyl, something that would match the building brick, whatever. So that's gonna go for public hearing also in April. And then the spread, the special project ordinance modification, which was the end result of the meeting that we had jointly with yourselves and the planning commission, where we talked about the special projects in the line. So we vetted that all out, and we're ending up on saying, basically, you can take an existing special project area, either zoned, non-residential, or multiple-family, and adjust the line as long as the property is adjacent to that property. So we're not, we worried about the outcry from the people saying, you're just gonna make up new districts like Solaronics, like the administration building, not asking for that. Those are not special project areas. So any existing special project area, we can modify that line if there is a, a Scribner's area, we call it. We found a couple of places where they have this, the special projects line cuts the property in half because there are two Sidwells. It makes no sense. They're, they're split. So this will allow the planning commission to make that modification, but not create a brand-new district. So it's not the Wild, Wild West. So that's where we're headed. That's going to public hearing in April also. And I think that was.
April what? April what?
April third.
April third, okay.
Any questions? I'd just say, because I, I did watch some of it on the computer. The lighting provision, I think we sent it to the planning commission for them to look at. I think the planning commission has looked at it as much as they can, and it needs to come back to the city council. So it's coming back here for, I would say, final, some final.
Disposition.
Resolution somehow, somewhere. So that's coming. As, as the manager said, we're gonna have a meeting to set up a public hearing, is there, and then.
Twenty-eighth and then.
And then, and then talk about lighting and make a decision or, or whatever we decide to do.
Mayor, I do have a question for city manager. So regarding the brewery, is there enough parking there?
Yeah, so they meet, they, I think they're two parking spaces short where they can do pay-in lieu also. But remember, most of it is the brewery, so it's only ninety-nine seats. So they meet their ordinance with their own parking, and then the pay-in lieu, we have parking right up the street. They also have that option to go to the bank next door, so when the banks close, they could get reciprocal parking, which could eliminate them even needing the waiver for parking, but it should be fine.
Okay.
They're talking. Is this the second street?
Yes.
That's where you are, right?
I know.
Across the street.
I just have a question about traffic. I mean, if people are going in at eight and, or, well, they wouldn't probably go at eight, but in the evening, you can't get in and out of there. Is there, I don't know what to tell people. I can't get out. I, I cannot get out. I could only turn right.
So we, we can have that discussion, but Rochester has the roads that we have. We can't widen them.
I know.
And we don't control the track that comes through. It feels like that to a lot of people, but the traffic studies will show you over the time period, it's, it's acceptable. It's not even close to Level C in service. So, yeah, I, I know you're there all the time, but it's, we're not, we can't stop development because of.
Can you say you can't turn left at certain times?
The planning commission will take all that into consideration.
Honestly.
Mr. City Manager, remember that the construction.
Yeah, that's really messing everything up right now.
Okay, well, I.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, just one other thing, though. I think one of the bigger hazards that I've seen lately there is that after you've turned from Main Street to go, you know, east on Second, people turn to go down the alley, and that's what is hard to do right there, too, especially because there's the pedestrian crosswalk.
There's a lot of kids there, too. There, I'm just waiting for it, unfortunately.
I will say, sitting inside Cedar Brook, looking out over that at five o'clock.
Oh, one left.
It is backed up from Cedar Brook to.
Elizabeth.
Main Street.
Yeah.
I mean, it, you, you could not make a left turn hardly out of Cedar Brook.
If you tell them not to, though, maybe they all have to turn right.
Well, I, I can tell you this, that.
Don't know.
Monday, or Tuesday, I'm sorry, after staff meeting. So there, there's so much going on in that quarter. So Aseal's giving me giant aerials of the area from Elizabeth, actually Letica, all the way to Main Street. And we're gonna start looking at traffic, all these things that you're talking about, they're all legitimate concerns. About how could we limit, knowing that we can't widen roads, how could we stop traffic somewhere? Maybe there's a light at Elizabeth that stops so we can get a gap, right? Or maybe there's no turn on red at Main Street, or no turns at the alley. So we're gonna look at all those comprehensively, the whole staff with TIA, our trafficking, our traffic experts, have our own analysis so that we could tell the developers what we think is the right thing to do to control it, because it's, it's crazy. But right now, it's, you can't get a baseline because the chief's right. With Avon down, everybody's coming off Second Street to Letica.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Right, so it's not just because it's unpleasant for me and others, not just that. It's that this business is coming in, and people may not want to come and have, you know, they go, oh, don't go there because you can't get out. You can't get in and you can't get out. And those are things I worry about, that business, because there wasn't a business before. It was a veterinarian, and it was an emergency veterinarian, and you're gonna get in there no matter what. But it's what I'm concerned about, truly. But, I mean, okay, it's a bother and it's annoying. I just live with it. But that's my concern.
But again, it's the property owner who's buying the property knows exactly what she's getting into.
I'm concerned about that. Okay, that's all I was gonna say.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, a report from the City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Gould.
Thank you. I actually was not in attendance, but I understand a lot of folks weren't. We didn't have quorum, but Councilmember Trent did attend, and Rachel Williams provided a lovely summary. So I can give you the gist of what they did do. They just weren't able to accomplish any voting items. So it was essentially a brainstorming session for the display case out here in City Hall. And she thanks Marilyn for leading the creative and to Amanda from Dinosaur Hill for collaboration on the project. I think Councilmember Trent already filled everybody in on Carl and Colin creating the birdhouses for Howlett Park as well. There is a bird nest monitoring, monitoring training session on March twenty-third. Distributing information on that if anybody's interested. Just by way of an update for the plan on the display case. The theme is Rochester's best-kept secret, Dinosaur Hill, Rochester Pollinators, and the CBC. Top shelf will hold a definition of each group, as well as the seed library artwork, a map of the trail, program information, any artifacts. Second shelf will hold a pollinator-friendly garden sign and photos of the gardens in Rochester. And the bottom shelf will hold any other artifacts from Dinosaur Hill, information on the plant sales, and the monarch life cycle, and good neighbor award plaques. That's it.
That was a very productive meeting that wasn't a meeting.
Yeah, right.
Rachel's amazing.
Yeah, Rachel. Councilmember Trent.
Just, just to add on, if anyone is interested in that, in the birdhouse training, it's at the Paint Creek Cider Mill on March twenty-third. I think it's two o'clock. I think it's, yeah. Yeah, provided by Oakland Township and their green space naturalist, Dr. Ben Vanderweedy.
You're good. Thank you. Next is a report from the Tree Committee, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on Thursday, March ninth. We welcomed Colin Pettit. He came to our last meeting, so we're gonna have him at, at all the meetings going forward. And we partnered with the City Beautiful Commission. Rachel couldn't make it, so Janine Krupp came in her lieu. So we, Nick gave an update on the tree fund, which I reported last month. We've got north of forty-four thousand, twenty-two thousand of that is sort of in escrow until the one-year period passes for those people who can plant trees to offset that, that amount. We were talking about the Sugar Maple Grove, and we want to do a ribbon cutting, but we want to make sure we have all our ducks in the row. So we have DPW, thank you, DPW, is gonna be building two shelters in the early spring. So once those are done, they'll be placed in the Maple Grove. We will then have sponsorship opportunities for two hundred dollars per tree, where you put the butterfly ribbon on the tree, name the tree after whoever you want. Two thousand dollars for benches, however many benches we put in there, and twenty-five hundred dollars for each of those shelters. Again, those, those monies will go towards the, the tree fund to plant more trees. Our big conversation was really about Arbor Day. Arbor Day is Friday, April twenty-eighth. This year, we are focusing, we've changed, if you remember, last year, we were in the municipal park and the year before, the last two years. Before that, we were in the cemetery. This year, we are going to go, we're gonna partner with McGregor Elementary School with a third-grade class, approximately seventy-five students. We've met with the principal. And Melissa Weiss, who is our marketing guru on the Tree Committee, has met with the third-grade teachers, and we will have a, you know, coloring pages. We are also gonna do a, have the children create a Tree Committee mascot to go with the school's mascot. And we will plant the tree at two-thirty on that Friday, the twenty-eighth. We are also going to give each third grader a four-to-five-inch, one-and-a-half-year sapling, an evergreen, in a little burlap bag that they can take home. They don't plant it right away. They will need to sort of nurture it for a year inside. We'll give them instructions for it. So they, so to get attached to the tree, and then they plant it the year after. Again, some of you have already heard the story. My daughter did this when I moved here in ninety-nine, and that tree is now towering over the back of my house. So those tree saplings do, do grow up. We then talked about, in two thousand twenty-one, we planted the trees on Letica. In two thousand twenty-two, we did the Sugar Maple Grove. So this year, we're looking at where we want to do tree plantings, and there's several areas. we've, we've identified. One will be on Romeo Drive near Howlett Park, Nick and Colin, what? Oh, okay. On, four to seven trees will fit in there very well. We're not going to line them up like Letica is going to be sort of offset to sort of match the area. Then we sort of brainstorm as a committee. We will, the Creekside Lift Station on Runyon, seven trees were taken down, so we're going to, you can just see the stumps right now. Those will be pulled out and then we'll put some trees in there that'll be a little more better for that, that area. Dinosaur Hill, Nick mentioned many months ago how Dinosaur Hill got obliterated by all the, the windstorms back in the summer, so we, we can put some trees there. Right out here, right outside the store, there's three trees that are sort of, need to go down and we're going to take those down and put six new trees and put in a picnic area for the seed administration staff to have picnics there. And then again, the cemetery will always be a place we can, we can add trees judiciously. So we've got a lot of opportunities to plant trees this year to continue our, the third year of our Rochester 100. We will have two articles in the spring newsletter. I'll be doing one on the, the update on the Rochester 100. We're also going to talk about, you know, the impact of the DTE, DTE power outages and, you know, there's been some comments too, Nick, that, well, the Tree Committee won't let us take down trees and we're going to clear that up because that's not, not the case. And secondly, we wanted to make sure people know that all the trees we planted, we planted over 250 trees in two years, none of them interfere with wires. We've always put them in public areas where they are not going to interfere with wires. So we did think about that well before the latest episodes we've had. So we'll have that in the, in the spring newsletter and then Melissa will write something about the Arbor Day celebration, which we're looking for. You know, anytime you involve children and third graders and things like that sort should be a fun thing. Then lastly, with the City Beautiful Commission, we want to do a tree mural somewhere in municipal park. Right now it's just still a little premature, but the Kiwanis Shelter is going to get some sort of freshen up and we may do four by eight panels. We may do it against the back, but we'll partner with the City Beautiful Commission to get an artist and raise funds to make this happen. So that's it.
Very good. Councilmember Trent? Councilmember Peterson?
Oh.
Councilmember Trent?
I have a question for the city manager. Regarding these murals that are going up, do we have a maintenance plan for those put in place that we're saving money for now for when they need to be replaced?
So, two things, good question. So in our research, common, Colin, the credit for this, they found a coating that they put on there that it's virtually destruction-proof and it stops the UV rating. So then we just keep reapplying that and we should not ever have to cover those up as long as they keep that coating on there. So that both of the ones in town have them in there now. So, yep.
But we do have a maintenance plan for them and they, we need.
If they, if they ever got destroyed, we would have to strip them because you can't touch them up. The colors don't match, but this coating really has done a wonderful job. One on Main Street looks brand new. You know, it's already been a couple of years.
I know, that's why I wondered.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Councilmember Trent?
Just the next report is DDA, they forgot to put it on here. That was all.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you for that great tree report.
Yeah, you found the DDA report. Thank you.
All right, so the DDA met on February 28th and they have a budget subcommittee that met and they, they showed us their proposed budget, they called it the high-level review and then they will get that approved and they will bring, that will be presented to city council, I think in April. Then we were presented a proposed town square project that's going to be at the farmer's market parking lot at Water and Third. And Scott Reynolds with Auger Klein and our architects presented a work plan, timeline and cost to create that design. But they, they also said the AEW, it's AEW engineers, right? AEW engineers are going to do a topo and soil bearings, borings assessment before the final design can be created and presented. And for those of you, which was me as well, that didn't know what soil borings are, it's an important process. It's used to investigate the subsurface conditions of the land to determine how suitable the soil is for construction and assess the risk of landslides and other geologic hazards. There are a lot of, there were a lot of questions asked and Scott answered them openly and professionally and he gave us a proposed schedule. And the DDA has been researching grants to help pay for this project as well as using their funds that they've been saving up to do it. They said that Oakland County has some funds that they can try to, that they will be applying for. Senator Gary's, Gary Peters' office, I think I'm right on this, Nick, right? Senator Gary Peters' office at the federal level or there's, might be some grant opportunities? And maybe Representative James.
We're meeting him Friday, yep.
Congressman Representative James is, they're meeting with him as well. So they're trying everything. And for Doug, no, sorry, Congressman, Councilman Doug, 42 light poles will be replaced by a local company. And not just for you, but for us as well. And we're proud to announce that the Rochester DDA has been awarded Main Street Oakland County accreditation for the 18th year in a row, as Councilmember Doug Gould said. So that's it.
Very good, thank you. Next is their public comment. Anybody in the audience? No? Okay. To miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Manager, just one thing, Councilwoman Peterson, just before the meeting, reached out about State of the County tomorrow. We didn't even get invited. I don't think it was a, I don't know how they did that, but it's tomorrow night and they didn't specifically invite us. They actually sent one to the DDA maybe because of Main Street. So Christie's going to go and I'm going to go, I know that, but I'm sure we can call in tomorrow and get people in there if they'd like to go. It's tomorrow at 7:00. I'm not even sure where it's at, to be honest with you. It's in West, it's at, they moved it off-site.
What is it?
The State of the County.
Oh.
Yeah, State of the County.
So it's kind of generically thrown out there, I think, so.
I, I received an invitation.
Okay, I don't know how they, I didn't get one even.
I was not able to attend.
Yeah, but if you, Councilwoman, if you'd like to go, we can make arrangements for you tomorrow.
Okay.
If anybody else would like to go, let me know and we'll, we'll show the lettuce scope. So we just, we just registered today, literally.
Okay, great.
It's never been invitation only.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure how that.
This, for whatever reason, was.
Of the C A N?
Oh, maybe it's, oh, maybe it's because so many people can only fit in there, I don't know. Good point. I'll check.
Okay.
You can take my spot. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
I have one, Your Honor. We have begun the advertisement for the annual renewal for boards and commissions positions. We directly emailed those that are up for renewal. I will highlight one board that we are in desperate need of members. We, our compensation commission is required to meet in odd years to discuss and make a decision on council members' pay. We only have one board member of five, so there's not a quorum to even meet. So I really, we've been advertising it on the city website for the last several weeks and we've gotten no response. I really need council members to shake your trees and find a couple people for us.
Approve big raises for ourselves, right?
Yeah, big ones.
So yes, if everybody can work on that. And then could you send out something that, who is up on all the different boards?
I will send out the updated list. I was working on that last Friday. So I will send that out to all the city councils who are familiar with, know what.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
I would just put in a plug for the compensation committee. I was on there for years. It's a, it's a really great, great opportunity to get involved. So anybody out there listening, please sign up.
Thank you. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, but I know my colleagues probably will update us on Founder's Day as I was out of town and unable to attend. But one thing I did hear from Dr. Petrie, the chairman of, of the Historical Commission, that in future events, I think we're going to try and start to recognize some people that have made impacts to the community. And I'll give you three names, notably June Hopelock, who's passed, and her contributions to the city, Gail Kemmler, who's still alive, and Bob Michalka, who was the author of the D U R book.
Very good. Councilmember Albert?
Yeah, I'll pick up there. Yesterday was a great day to be a city councilperson. I'd like to thank the fire chief and his staff. Ra-Ra had their first pancake breakfast in a while. I was there and we had an amazing turnout and it helps defer the costs for camps for those people who financially can't afford the, the summer camp. So thank you again for that. And then later in the day, I went to Founder's Day and those of you who know Pat McKay, I could listen to that guy talk for four hours. I mean, he has so much information and the, the focus of his speech was the Stony Creek District, that area where the schoolhouse is and the houses there and, and the history he shared and, and, and the people in the audience, there were people in the audience who had ancestors who lived in these houses. It was amazing, you know, just the history there. And then they had some, after a short cut, cut the cake and refreshments, they had some Irish step dancers, young children doing that, which was just, just a nice day. I mean, just made you smile. The next city council meeting, I will be in Boston at the Main Street Conference. That's the downtown Main Street Conference. I'm speaking on that Monday. I've got a presentation, I'll be there that week with Christie and a couple others from her team. That's it, Mayor.
Good. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, for those of you who haven't heard enough about the city of Rochester being a monarch champion city, they, I want to thank the Community Lifestyles and Rochester Posts for helping us spread that great announcement of one in four cities in the nation to have this designation. Yep, welcoming the monarchs back in a few months. They've got a city in their camp.
All right, congrats Marilyn. Councilmember Peterson?
I want to thank the, and congratulate the fire department on that, staying ISO because I think that's important for us here. And it just goes to show what a great, great group of people you have there. So that and I'm glad the weather's nice.
Thank you. Didn't seem that nice today, but I don't know.
It was nice, yeah.
I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank the city manager, the mayor pro town for filling in for me when I was out these last couple of weeks. I appreciate all the help.
Your video was awesome though, your TikTok.
We haven't seen you since that, that was pretty cool. Rumor has it you hurt yourself filming those karate scenes.
I actually showed that to my students and that was actually one thing they actually